Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
New Year.
This is the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Carrboro Town Council, our first meeting back from the holidays. So, welcome back, everyone. It's good to see you. We have, first, I just want to say Randy apologizes for not being able to attend tonight. She wishes everyone a happy and hopeful two thousand and twenty-three. Also, as you know, Richard, our town manager, is feeling a little under the weather this evening, so he's just being cautious and staying away this evening, but I wish him well. We are going to start, as we always do, with a reading from our poet laureate. And tonight, that is a new poet laureate, as of ten days ago. I'm very happy to welcome Liza Will Francis to read for us tonight. Welcome, Liza.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm excited to be here. Can I just stand in front of both of these?
Sound great.
Hey, this is exciting. Happy New Year. I have a poem that I wrote for Carrboro, and thinking of you all getting going in your, in your work here, and, and yeah. Carrboro, this town is like a woman listening to wind in the trees without taking it for granted, not making a fuss about the leaves being thrown around or about the sway it's giving the trunks, but enjoying the feel of air on her face, like the whole of everything. She acts at times like she's an observer, but she is the cake, the prize, singing about pink sunrise skies. She eats breakfast in the breakaway with the heavy ceramic coffee mugs, where everyone smiles "good morning," down from the roundabout, where there's a hidden stage in the woods, up the forest path. I sat there with her one quiet afternoon, reading aloud a poem from my phone, while a deer walked by, listening warily to my voice. Up from there, she's a rainbow farmer in the West End, selling tomatoes, donuts, tamales, soup, grits, cheeses, and community. There is so much to name in the places we inhabit together, day after day. This town, she goes to market in an old mill in order to center her busyness, gives a little twirl around red, yellow, blue metal chairs, kicks back in restaurants, picks up cards from the card shop, the bookshop, strolls along looking at art. A train casually comes to see her near the biscuits and booze, wailing music, tie, and time. She dances in the building that says Black Lives Matter and across the street, where live music stirs most nights. My friend played his saxophone there, pulling notes from the bricks, while my husband danced with her. We cheered for someone's birthday, and they gave us cake and crowns. In this town, everyone knows her face, and the squirrels trade stories while they tease the dogs, who bark at the children on their scooters and the joggers in the sun. This town, trees tall with memory, murders of crows, honking geese, visiting vultures, herds of deer, scent of rain lifts you up in a cloud, mist on fingertips. Some days, it's like a rainforest, wet ground, the sound of falling water, the taste of seed and berry, a call of birds, birds through veils, time's veil. And I am here, and you are here, in this town. We wave to each other, like the forest is thick with all of us, like we have to see through the trees, and the train is coming, like we each bring something meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you, Liza. Liza, before I let you go, could you remind us about the event that's coming up later this month to celebrate our local poets?
Absolutely, and I put flyers in you all's seats, but it's open to everyone. On January twenty-eighth, that's the Saturday night, from six o'clock to eight o'clock, we're going to have a poets' party. And it will be to honor Fred Joyner, who is the outgoing poet laureate for Carrboro, and to welcome me, who is the incoming poet laureate. We will have Jackie Shelton Green, who is the North Carolina poet laureate read. She's going to read a poem. We will have CJ Soot, who is the out, was the outgoing Chapel Hill poet laureate, and we'll have the new poet laureate for Chapel Hill as well, who is Cortland Gilliam, and a few poet laureates who have been poet laureates here in the town of Carrboro over the years. And it should be a fun event from six to eight o'clock, so please join us. It's free. Everybody's welcome, and if you like poetry and want to come hang out, we'd love to, love to have you. Please. And it's in the Century Center, yes. Century Center, six to eight, January twenty-eighth.
Thanks very much, Liza.
Thank you so much. I'm so honored to be in this position, and excited.
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
One other quick acknowledgement. One of the things Richard was sad about not being able to do tonight, because he's absent, is to introduce to us a new town employee, and that is Zach Kier. And Zach, would you stand up and be welcome, just real quick? Zach started working last week for the town as the assistant to the town manager. He comes to us from Wake County, where he was an ICMA Local Government Management Fellow, received his MPA from UNC Charlotte, Go Forty-Niners. And he also, he also served for a number, has served for a number of years as an officer in the North Carolina Army National Guard, which I understand is where he actually gained an interest in local and state government because of his experience working on natural disaster relief. So, appreciate you being here tonight. I know one of Zach's many assignments from Richard will be to start tackling some processes for responding to residents' customer service inquiries for the town, and I know Richard is glad to have you on board, so welcome, Zach. Thanks for being here. All right, we have a resolution this evening, and I'd like to invite Barbara, Councilmember Fushi, to read that for us. And special guest tonight is Mr. Atreus Good, who has been with us virtually before. You'll remember him from about a year ago with a similar resolution. And Mr. Good is with the Youth Mentoring Collaborative. And if you don't mind joining Barbara at the podium, I'm sure she would love to have some company up there.
Yeah.
Thanks for being with us tonight.
We hanging out up here together?
Oh, yeah. That's what it looks like.
You can help me read any. Good evening, everyone. A resolution recognizing National Mentoring Month. Whereas National Mentoring Month brings awareness to the importance of quality mentoring that promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth of a young person and their relationships with other adults. And whereas the town of Carrboro honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas mentoring programs like the Chapel Hill Carrboro City Schools, Blue Ribbon Mentor Advocate Program, Volunteers for Youth, Musical Empowerment, the Reintegration Support Network, Triangle Bike Works, and the Refugee Community Partnership, and capacity-building agencies like the Youth Mentoring Collaborative make our communities and our state stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. And whereas during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, mentoring programs across the state stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources despite physical distancing. And whereas trauma-informed, alternative approaches to mentoring that target mental health challenges provide a pathway to promote mental wellness, increase access to evidence-based mental wellness skills training, and reduce structural barriers to mental health services. And whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workforce development by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people, and driving positive outcomes for communities across the state. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the town of Carrboro, North Carolina hereby recognizes January two thousand and twenty-three as National Mentoring Month in Carrboro and encourages residents to encourage and celebrate mentoring throughout the community, this, the tenth day of January two thousand and twenty-three. And while I'm remembering, I'm going to move this resolution, but I think my man here, Atreus, is going to say a few words.
Sure.
Mr. Good, before you start, Barbara has moved this resolution. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Posada. Please, Mr. Good. Go ahead.
Well, thank you all for recognizing National Mentoring Month. And for those of you who know me, my name's Atreus Good. I'm president and CEO of Youth Mentoring Collaborative. We are a capacity-building agency that essentially helps mentoring programs be their best. And one of the things I've shared in the past, I've been doing mentoring professionally for about fifteen years, but mentoring's been a part of my entire life, for those that know my personal story, is one of which where I grew up in a household where drug abuse was prevalent, and I had to struggle through a number of challenges that I was forced to deal with adult issues very early on. And it was because of a mentor, I was able to move forward and be successful. And one of the things that we're focusing on is something called healing-centered mentoring, because I recognize that, that my story is not unique. And what we recognize is that COVID-nineteen essentially lifted up the veil on what we knew was already a mounting mental health crisis, where school districts across this country are struggling to help young people figure out how to move forward and be successful. And, and what we understand is that the number-one protective factor of a young person is having a positive, supportive, caring adult that cares about them. And so, healing-centered mentoring is infusing mental health modalities into mentoring. So, emotion, regulation, distress tolerance, all those key skills that a young person needs to move forward and be successful. And so, we look forward to additional conversations about that. The second thing that I'll mention, and I'll, I'll sit down, is this notion of collaboration. So, previously, we were known as Mentor North Carolina, so we were affiliated with the, the National Mentoring Partnership. And we are Youth Mentoring Collaborative now, because we believe that values matter, that oftentimes, values just exist in a statement. And what we're recognizing is that when, when stuff hits the fan, you recognize what people actually believe in. And so, we believe that collaboration is key to our survival as human beings, that we have to work together. And mentoring programs for oftentimes have worked in silos, not sharing best practices, resources. So, we very much look forward to figuring out, what does it take for people to collaborate effectively, to move forward, and specifically, to focus on the goal, which is helping young people move forward and be successful. So, thank you all so much for supporting mentoring programs, and we're looking forward to additional collaboration in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Atreus. Council members all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The matter passes unanimously, of course. Thank you, Atreus. It's good to see you in person.
You too. Thank you.
All right. Barbara, thanks for the resolution. Mr. Clerk, announcement of upcoming meetings, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Got a few meeting announcements here. First one is the Arts Committee meeting, January eleventh, well, tomorrow, January eleventh, at six PM, and that is held, will be held on Zoom. Also, tomorrow, January eleventh, we have the Economic Sustainability Commission meeting, also at six PM. That meeting will be held here at Town Hall on January the twelfth. We have the Stormwater Advisory Commission meeting, and that will be held on Zoom this Saturday, January fourteenth. From one to three PM, we'll have the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration at Century Center, one hundred North Greensboro Street. I didn't want to mention that, upcoming event. And then, the next council meeting will be next Tuesday, January seventeenth, at seven o'clock.
Thanks very much, Wesley. Any other town meetings to notice? I'll just mention that tomorrow morning at Durham City Hall will be the monthly meeting of the Durham Chapel Hill Carrboro MPO Board, and you'll be hearing more about that board today. But that'll be nine AM at Durham City Hall tomorrow morning. We have a few folks signed up to offer some public comments, and I'll just go in the order that people signed up. And as, just as a reminder, for those who are visiting us tonight, we do ask that visitors keep their remarks to about three minutes or so, and I'll be using a timer to keep you to it. So, Matt Neal, I'm looking at you. All right, so first on the list tonight is Tom Arnell. Welcome, Tom.
Hi, I'm help, I'm helping organize an event that will be held at Fleet Feet at ten AM on MLK Day, January sixteenth. It'll be a MLK, I call it MLK Day of Service, community-run walk. And the object is that the people, people gather, and then they can either run, walk, crawl, even bike, to MLK Junior Park and back. So, it's about a four-mile trek. Go around, maybe look at the plaques. So, what I wanted to do was make people aware that we have this park, and, and also to make people aware of nonprofits in the area. Some nonprofits, so there'll be literature, and there'll be volunteer opportunities, both running-related and non-running-related. And if you want to come and share your information, you are welcome to come and help us out. So, it's just, it's more of an awareness event.
Sorry, remind us what time it's on?
It'll be at ten AM on, on Martin Luther King Day, January sixth, Monday, this coming Monday.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for organizing that and letting us know about it. And that's going to be starting at Fleet Feet downtown? Great. All right, next up is Brian Crawford. Brian, welcome.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And then your comments are up in the list, so you can see your notes.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you. Full service.
We try.
So, good evening. My name is Brian Crawford. I live in the newly-developed Kentfield neighborhood. I made a small adjustment to your logo, because I do not feel free. I am shackled by bureaucracy. Today, I brought all of the competent evidence that was used to block the road that I live on. Here it is, in black and white, mostly white, because there was no competent evidence used in the quasi-judicial hearing to block Wyndham Drive. What you did have was fear-mongering, speculative assertions, mere expressions of opinion, hearsay, and generalized fears, all of which is conclusively incompetent in the state of North Carolina. But I am bound and shackled by bureaucracy, because the statute of limitations is only thirty days to appeal this. Unbelievable. This is the full excerpt of the law. Except for the items noted in some subdivisions, A, B, and C, these are conclusively incompetent. All of the people who talked to the Town Council were talking about traffic resulting from a proposed development poses a danger to public safety. It should not have been allowed. Today, I'm asking for four things, and I would like to strike three, but that's just because I didn't know that there was a state law that prohibited it. So, my belief is there needs to be a major revision, and I hope that the mayor's already looking at this, to the quasi-judicial procedures, because this should never happen again. It should not be allowed, in Carrboro, of all places. My also, my second ask to you is that when these quasi-judicial hearings come up, and future residents will have no chance of appealing, because of the thirty-day limit, you should put in a special exception that necessitates the increase of the time limit of appeal until at least the HOA is turned over to residents, until the HOA is turned over to owner residents. Number three, we can squash. It's illegal. Maybe. Okay, number four, this is important. The Town Council, the town of Carrboro, and the appointed advisory board members should review the existing roadblocks and ensure that they are not creating a disparate impact. I'd like to show you on this map the three roadblocks that I have serious concerns about. And I want to talk about the neighborhood up on the top, that green one, that's the neighborhood I live in. Twenty-five percent of those homes, affordable housing. The neighborhood to the right, forty percent of those homes, affordable housing. The neighborhood over here, Arcadia, I don't know if this is technically affordable housing, but this is a co-op. It's kind of this interesting situation.
And Brian, you're at three minutes, just so you know.
But all of this, these neighborhoods, Wexford, Williams Woods, Kate's Farm, Cobblestone, they're all interconnected. You can drive on these roads freely. But the homes with affordable housing are segregated, and this is what that looks like.
Thanks, Brian. And I followed up to your email. I hope you saw it this afternoon, so, yeah. We'll be in touch. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, thanks for putting the slides up. Yes, Sammy?
Just a question. I mean, we spoke about, during our procedures retreat, about a way in which the town manager would register these and follow up with us and with the status of how they proceed. I presume we're not there yet, but I would like for this one to be added in that to-be list.
For follow-up.
Starting now, yeah, for follow-ups, and a mechanism by which we can check in and, and see the progress on it. Thank you.
Madam Manager, can you add that to the list for some follow-up by staff? Well, Danny?
Unrelatedly, Mayor and staff, we've had a couple folks reach out and say that there is no stream-up available tonight, so I'm not sure if that's reparable, but I think a couple folks are interested and would love to watch.
Wesley, it looks like you're aware of this problem.
Okay.
They're, they're working on the streams, but they are currently.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, it sounds like some people who are trying to watch from home are having trouble with the stream, so people are working on it. All right, thank you. And yeah, Sammy, just to, on your comment, I know the manager's been working on that, and Wesley have been looking into some of the processes other municipalities have been using to keep track of these requests. And we mentioned Chapel Hill, for example, has this online version, so, yeah. Okay, next up, I have Kari Lennox coming up. Welcome. I hope I said your name correctly. Yes?
There's a party outside every single time we have these meetings.
We are often graced with this soundtrack.
We're going to join out there sometime.
Yeah.
So, the reason I was prompted to speak is I, I came across something in the Chapelboro News, a blog post that was very disturbing to me. And I wanted to point out that, I love the poet laureate's poem, by the way, but I moved from Wake County to Carrboro for a variety of reasons, many of which were pointed out in that lovely poem of yours. And she mentioned the trees and the birds and the nature. I came from North Raleigh. If anyone has taken a trek through North Raleigh, have you ever heard of the show Weeds? It's like cookie-cutter houses and cookie-cutter neighborhoods, one little tree in each yard. My husband used to say that the blood would drain from his body into the ground every time he drove into the neighborhood. And so, partly, I moved to Carrboro because the trees, it's beautiful here, and the value system. I felt like I was, you know, embracing this value system that I have always embraced all the years of my life. And so, it's kind of disturbing to me when I read something, this blog post, that suggests that people like me should maybe be limited in our ability to be able to make public comments here. I don't know if any of you have come across this article or not, but it was, I almost thought it's like a dystopian society. Patrick McDonough is the person I think it's attributed to, and he was saying that the Carrboro Town Council should consider limiting people that are white and that own homes from making these sorts of public comments. And I'm truly disturbed by that for a variety of reasons. One, it's racist. Two, I'm disturbed by that because I feel like what he's describing is actually a false narrative. If people knew the people that they're talking about, my neighbors, my friends, me, they would recognize that we are not, as he is describing. I've been to a couple of Town Council meetings now, and I came into this experience because I don't believe that an affordable housing complex should be built in my neighborhood. I don't. And it's because I'm a proponent of the environment. I don't believe that I should be excluded from a conversation about that, because I have a dissenting view. I have a very complex reason, set of reasons, why I believe what I believe, as does everyone in my neighborhood. And so, to boil it down to, we are white, wealthy landowners, I wish that you could know my story. I was going to say this to the young gentleman, the mentor. I grew up like he did. I am not that person. My neighbor, they, my neighbors have said that they would allow me to share bits of their stories. My neighbor, Emma, neighbor and friend, she grew up...
Just so you know, you reached the three minutes.
Can I, can I have just a couple more minutes? She grew up in, in England, left her home at age fifteen for a variety of reasons, came over to the United States, worked in restaurants, which is a grueling experience, because that's what I did to get myself through college, and then opened her own restaurant. And it's in Carrboro, and it's a wonderful restaurant. She has two biracial children, and now two have Moroccan children, okay? The neighbor next to her, gay, single parent, she has raised her children by herself. She came from Polish immigrant parents. She was working from the time she was fifteen. She is now on an AIDS research team, and she put herself through college. Now, she's struggling to make ends meet, so that she can put her own children through college. And there's Renee. She had divorced, a divorced mom. Child support, she said there was no child support in those days. Her mother went bankrupt twice. She's now working for community mental health, Renee is, and she's taking care of her mother financially. There is no money. There's no transfer of wealth. And I'm just going to end with my story. I come from the inner city in Norfolk, Virginia. I have a... I have a single parent mom, she's now deceased, she died last year. I had a single parent mom, my dad died when I was six. I earned every dime of everything I had. My mom went bankrupt once, she raised three children by herself. There was no transfer of wealth when she died, penniless. Okay, my entire family, this is what I was gonna say, I can collaborate with Eris, is his name Eris? Because that's, my entire career has been built around that concept, because I had a mentor. So I would love to get to know each and every, every one of you. You all are public servants, I respect that. You've taken the time to lead this community. I would like this community to be the community that I embrace again. I don't feel like I'm part of this community. It's prompted me to consider moving, which is super sad, super sad.
Thanks very much, Kari, for sharing your story.
I hope to meet you at Open Eye, that's my next.
Happy to see you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, next up we have Matt Neal, welcome, Matt.
Wow, how y'all doing?
Doing well, happy new year.
Right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's an amendment for y'all to consider tonight about what has been a loading zone, although I guess it wasn't in the records as such, but it was marked as such. And now it's unmarked, and that's on South Greensboro Street in front of Neal's Deli and the Speakeasy, and it's right next to Open Eye. Well, right now it's completely unmarked. And what happens there right now, since the parking lot went away for the construction project, is that some people are parking there all day long, because why not? There's a lack of parking, and this is unmarked. So, but what it really functions importantly as is a loading zone. And by the way, I'm not a partner at Neal's Deli anymore, but I'm a customer, and I know from experience and from what I've been told recently by the people who are operating several of those businesses that surround that space, is that they really need it for a loading zone. They need it to continue to be a loading zone, and it needs to be marked as such so that people won't just park there all day long and muck up the loading zone process. There's several businesses around there that really depend on that as a loading zone. And, I mean, I understand people, you know, wanna park, and people wanna bike, and people, you know, have other needs, but these businesses in the middle, right at Main Street and South Greensboro Street, that surround the space on the corner there, really need a good functioning loading zone, like it has been for years and years. And so I hope y'all will, what do you say, adopt that amendment tonight?
Coming up before us, right, in just a few, so thanks for weighing in.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it, Matt. Alright, we've heard from members of the public tonight, I appreciate you all being here, and I will just say, we always welcome people to come and speak and offer their thoughts during public comment and during public hearings and on agenda items, so thank you for participating. Our goal, of course, is to expand opportunities for participation outside of council meetings as well, and I hope that we'll be seeing more and more of that as staff works on these kinds of processes in the future. So, thanks again for being here. Barbara, did you have a comment?
Yeah, and I hate to backtrack, it was under meetings, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, so more events for Martin Luther King Junior Weekend. The Thirty-Eighth Annual MLK Junior Memorial Banquet is going on on Sunday. I don't know if it's sold out yet, six o'clock at the Friday Center. And also the Chapel Hill Carboro Branch of the NAACP is having their annual service at First Baptist Church of Chapel Hill at eleven AM, and the speaker is Greer Webb, a student at UNC.
And no march this year, if I understand correctly?
No march, no rally, nope.
Straight to the church.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Madam Manager, welcome, Trish, thanks for sitting in tonight.
Sure, you're most welcome. Okay, there are three items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is approval of the April twenty-sixth and May third, two thousand and two, twenty-two minutes. The purpose of this item is for the town council to adopt, oh, excuse me, that's the next one, sorry. The second item is adoption of the 2023 Town Council Meeting Calendar, and the purpose is to, for the town council to adopt the 2023 meeting calendar. The third item is appointment of Chief Chris Atack to the Orange County School Safety Task Force. Purpose of this agenda item is to request that the town council appoint Chief Chris Atack to serve on the Orange County School Safety Task Force.
Alright, thank you, Trish. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Actually, I'd like to pull all three, actually, sorry.
Are there any other, well, we're pulling all three. Sammy, why don't you go ahead with number one, please?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, Wesley, you got the, for the, the minutes, the, I guess it was April, no, the May third minutes, including affirmative all, the vote?
Yes.
Okay, I might have missed it in the email, sorry if I did, if you responded.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that was captured. And then I just wanted to raise a question. I know we'd gone into not being so descriptive in our minutes, and I've noticed that they're hyperdes... Like, again, like, something I appreciate very much, but I think as a council, we decided not to be so descriptive, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that and that we go back to that practice. And if we're not, then I'm gonna be as diligent as I was before. I just want us to be...
Thanks for raising that, Sammy, I think, so...
All in favor?
Let's, before we take up that item, just with the first one, can we go ahead and, can we move approval of the first item, please?
Yeah, I'll move the minutes.
Seconded by, moved by Sammy, seconded by Susan to approve item number one on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, matter passes unanimously. So, thanks for bringing up the question about number two. I agree with you, the council has expressed an interest in keeping the minutes concise and really focused on actions rather than on description. And I think that is a good policy to continue to follow, Wesley, for the future.
The other point I want to make is, there are two motions, matters by the board included, in both of those minutes. One had to do with this question about the bus shelter and the council seeking further information. This is for the manager. So I'd be interested in hearing the response to that motion, the information that was requested. And the second one was having to do about, we asked staff for information well in advance of the opening of the two or three building, on how users of that building will accommodate employee parking, and preferably not in the deck, so I'd like to know where we are at with that, given that we're under construction with it right now.
Thanks, Sammy, so Trish, maybe those go on that list of items to be followed up on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So for the second item, I would just like to hold off on approval of this. I appreciate the clerk's office providing the information that I requested, I just haven't had a chance to look at it, to comment intelligently about it.
That's adoption of the meeting calendar?
A meeting calendar.
Oh, the meeting calendar, okay.
So Sammy, I saw your emails earlier asking about why, the rationale for setting aside one meeting per month for a work session. And I guess I just would say that, you know, the, the meeting calendar can always be amended, right? If we find that we don't need a work session, we can schedule it as a business meeting, that kind of thing, so... It's not something we're locking into, or writing into stone.
I, I know that that can be the case. I also know that we write these, and we do these precedents, and, and then there's a slippery slope, and there's an assumption later down the road that this is how it's written. So, so I just want to be very clear and intentional about what, what it is we're setting precedent on, and, and that we match it with what our actual needs and experiences are, which is why I wanted to see what the last two years' worth of meetings look like for us, to see if, if this matches. I'm all for doing something like that, but I'd prefer that it actually match what our use is.
I think the problem is then we're operating without a meeting calendar.
Well, for, till next week.
We have the January...
The January meetings are set.
So that is fine.
Well, what is the council's pleasure on this item? Like I said, the meeting calendar can always be amended. Susan, and then, Susan and then Eliasar, and Danny.
Yeah, Sammy, I appreciate you raising that, and I, I did have a, my question was, looks like, you know, each month these work sessions are scheduled. And I wasn't sure if that work schedule, that was all we were doing at the council meeting, or was that indicating that we're having a council meeting, there will be a work, you know, there may be a work session at that meeting. It was a little confusing to me if the entire meeting was devoted to a work session.
Right, well, given that we haven't adopted procedures yet, I would say that, you know, that's not fixed, in other words. And, and Sammy is right, in the past we have sometimes held work sessions as part of a larger agenda, and we may continue to do that in certain cases. I think the purpose of getting these on the calendar now was to say, and Sammy, Sammy, you often request that we do work sessions, right? This is saying, we are actually going to do work sessions, right? I think it's sort of to be determined how we structure those in a formal way, simply because we haven't adopted formal procedures as a council yet. Susan, are you...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the fact that the schedule can be amended, we're just kind of getting some dates on the calendar right now, I would be, I feel very comfortable with just adopting it this evening.
Eliasar, and then Danny.
Uh, yeah, so I was just, I was thinking when I was looking at the work sessions, that, you know, we, we're giving staff a directive, we wanna do all these things, and thinking of knowing that we have these work sessions to look forward to, I, I think gives staff a good time, like, well, let's have it done by this work session or by this other one. And rather than having this wider, you know, we'll get it to you at some point, or, you know, us asking for stuff and not giving directives as how long, I think this helps us as a council. At least, the way I'm looking at the schedule, it helps us as a council, like, alright, no, that's great, we would like to hear something of this, possibly in the next month's work session or something, and gives kind of like those timelines. So I'm totally in favor of this, and I was actually going to move the item for approval tonight. And of course, if there's going to be, if members of the council want to make any edits or changes, we can revisit those as we have, as I imagine the council has done in the past on calendars, and willing to hear those. But for now, let's not delay this and have another, spend more time on this next week, until we know what those edits are, and just have it on the table. And when we see those edits needed, we can deal with them then.
Okay, so before I go, you, Danny, you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Barbara to approve item number two. Danny, go ahead.
My, I, I don't have strong feelings here. My preference is, just for the precedent of collegiality, to delay till next week. I think that, you know, we have done similar decisions when members haven't had time to respond to a same-day email in the past. So that aside, I think since we have our gap in January, it's not tremendously urgent that we adopt this. I, I would be my preference to do it tonight, but I think by and large, it seems that in the past we have delayed this kind of thing with a similar request and similar circumstance. And then also, I did just want to weigh in and say that I am pretty supportive of the, the schedule as written, in fact. I do think that my understanding of our conversations had been moving toward more designated work sessions, which I think is fairly important. And furthermore, my understanding is a work session meeting doesn't have to be just one topic, correct? It can be a work session under, you know, where we address a couple different things. So in that case, if we have sort of more minute or smaller work sessions that might not necessitate the use of a whole evening, my understanding is your concern is that other meetings may be pushed even later than even our precedent.
We've certainly done that in the past too, Danny, thanks for mentioning that, where we've had work sessions on multiple items on the same agenda, and that would be fine.
Yeah, and, but during our retreat, we were talking about trying to consolidate them precisely to minimize the public comment, so there's complexity here that I think would be valuable. As we are setting up our protocols, this is the kind of thing that it would behoove us to think through more. Given that, you know, there's no rush, we do have till the end of the month, I'm not quite understanding why we would need to approve it tonight. I'm requesting more time, because I would like to digest the information. And that is, like Danny points out, you know, how we've done it in the past. If a member would like more information, more time to think about something, and there's no rush, then I don't see why we would do it tonight.
Okay. You know, I'm kind of like Danny, I feel like I'm fine with the agenda, as, with the calendar as it's printed. I, I think it makes sense for us to start designating work session dates just so we can have them on the calendar, and maybe use those as a focus and a goal for our, for our agendas. I think it's helpful to staff to structure it that way. I'm also fine with Sammy having more time to review the information that he requested earlier from the clerk's office. So, you know, I'm willing to, I'm willing to delay consideration of this, but I do think it would be nice for us to get these on the calendar, regardless of what our procedures ultimately are around how we conduct work sessions, right? I think it's good to have them on the calendar, just like most governing boards in the county do have work sessions on the calendar, and use them as an opportunity to dive into topics in a less formal setting.
So I have a question.
I think, I'll come to you, Barbara, in just one second. Wesley had, I think, wanted to offer some input.
Another option, just, just for consideration, is, you know, you could, we can approve these dates, and to hold these dates, and consider them all business meetings, and not include them as work, just straight business meetings like we did for 2022, and then give Sammy some time to review, and then come back at any time and say, we would like to designate the rest of these, whether it be the second Tuesday of the month, whatever it might be, as work sessions and amended then. That way it holds the meeting dates.
Thanks for that idea, Wesley. Appreciate it. Barbara, you're next.
Yeah, and so I, I can vote now, you know, but I, I do respect that Sammy wants more time for next week. But what, I mean, what happens next week? Are we gonna have another discussion about it, or what, I mean, where are we, once Sammy has more time to look and see? That's my question.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I'm offering this council some of my work. I'll look and analyze what clerk has put together, you know, I want to honor their work too. Do that analysis, share it, land however it may be with y'all, but you have the benefit of hearing from one of your colleagues and his perspective on what this means.
Yeah, so we just put this...
It will help us inform our conversations going forward, especially in light of the fact that during our last retreat, we seemed to be very rigid about how we were thinking about work sessions, about them being just about work sessions. Tonight we're talking about being a little more flexible. So I just want to make sure, you know, we're thoughtful about this, and I'm offering to put some thought behind it.
And using the information that has been gathered, is this what you're talking about, the information that came this afternoon, today? Which I haven't had a chance to look through.
Exactly.
So there is a, there is a motion and a second to approve the calendar as printed in the agenda. It sounds like there are people willing to postpone for next week, to wait until next week, but there is a motion.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Eliasar has withdrawn the motion. Is there a motion to postpone this item until next week? Okay, Eliasar, is there a second? Alright, Eliasar has moved that we postpone this item to next week's meeting, it's been seconded by Sammy. Any further discussion?
I have just one.
Susan?
A question, I, I think this question is for Wesley, and I just had one date I wanted to bring up, which is the work session that's, or it could be a business meeting that's scheduled for April eleventh. And I, I believe that prior Sunday is Easter, and I think that prior Friday is a holiday, is Good Friday a holiday? So I'm bringing this all up because I know there's been a pattern with the other holidays falling on a Monday, to not have a meeting that Tuesday, so staff is not so, you can enjoy a weekend rather than all the time, the preparation that goes into getting ready for the Tuesday meeting. So my, my recommendation would be that we actually don't have anything scheduled for April eleventh. Not even have it as an option as a work session, just so staff and others can plan to have that whole time.
Get the clerks and the managers' feedback on that, next week we address this item again.
We can revise and put it in the agenda packet, and...
Sounds great.
With that revision, yeah, after week.
Okay. Motion and second to postpone this item to next week, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, matter passes unanimously.
So the third item is on this appointment of the school safety task force. We, we currently have, I can think of two people who, who are on the community safety task force that we have as a town. I appreciate someone mentioned it over email. And, and I would like for us to consider appointing one of those two people for this job. The county soliciting... The county soliciting an appointee, it could be the police chief, or it could be anyone that we designate. There will already be, I presume, a representation from police departments Chapel Hill and probably Hillsborough. So I don't, I don't see why we would have to have over-representation on that. I think would be valuable to have the perspective of two people, or one of the two people who I can think of, who are very passionate about this issue, representing Carboro on that. So I'd like to request that we ask the question to the Community Safety Task Force if there is interest and make a consideration of who we appoint at a later time.
Thanks, Sammy. So I just want to make sure we're being clear here about what the county has asked for. The county has asked for each of the towns to appoint their police chief to this committee, or their designee.
Or the police chief's designee?
And this is the language.
Or our designee.
This is pretty boilerplate language for.
It says Carboro Police Chief or Designee.
Right.
So our designee.
I think usually when you see that language, like in our ordinances and things, if it says, for example, Town Manager or Designee, it means the Town Manager or the manager's designee. It's not just any person.
Well, it's not the manager's designee, because we're being asked to approve it.
Saying the example of when that kind of language is typically used in other settings. For example, in our land use ordinance or whatever, when we use the words "or designee", like, for example, Town Manager or Designee, it means the manager or his designee.
I always consider that being whoever's making the appointment is the one that's designee. And so they're prompting you with the Carboro Police Chief or the designee that this council, which is being asked to approve of this tonight, decides who to designate.
Is that not a good choice of word?
I guess I just have read that differently. It seems pretty clear to me that the commissioner's intent is to appoint the chiefs from each of the jurisdictions. That just seems pretty obvious to me, but maybe I'm reading it.
Could we ask for clarity on that and then proceed accordingly?
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, I would just say, as long as we're asking for clarity on that, could we also be asking the commissioners if,
Case.
that we would like to appoint representatives from the Community Safety Task Force?
I'll take that, I'll make that, or you make, I'll second that as a motion. Thank you.
There's a motion to request information from the county about what their intent is in filling this appointment.
And also soliciting from the Community Safety Task Force if there's any interest.
I think it would be nice to hear what the county has asked us for, though.
Right. And the interest of saving time, though, if we get that information, we can go ahead and proceed and ask the Community Safety Task Force.
Is that an understanding for you, Susan, of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just want to understand the motion. So we're moving, or the motion is to get information from Orange County. And once we receive that information, then request or ask members of the task force? Are we doing this simultaneously?
If they say yes, then we would ask.
Only if they say yes, then we would ask. Okay. Because I don't want to us raise anyone's hope about possibly being serving when we don't even know if they can. Perfect.
Right. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Okay, we made it through the consent agenda.
Congratulations.
Okay, other matters. Madam Manager.
Hey, there are three other matters on the agenda this evening. The first matter is Durham Chapel Hill Carboro MPO 2021-2022 Annual Report. The purpose of this agenda item is for the Town Council to receive the 2021-2022 Annual Report from the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, DCHC MPO. And Doug Plachinsky, the new Executive Director of the MPO, is here tonight to make the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, Doug. Y'all, Doug Plachinsky, as Trish mentioned, is the relatively new Executive Director of the MPO. The board hired him last year, I think. It's hard to tell how time passes these days, but it was within the last year.
It seems like a very long time ago, but it's in reality.
After an extensive national search for that role. I'm very glad to have Doug on board with the MPO and happy to have him making the rounds to all of the member jurisdictions of the MPO to offer a presentation on the annual report. So, thanks, Doug.
Well, let me introduce, this presentation is as much an introduction or reintroduction of the MPO and myself as it is an annual report. We won't be going through any sort of budget numbers or inputs and outputs, so let me clarify that. But we are going to make it a point to annually visit all of our member communities and talk with them about what we've been doing and what we plan on doing. So. For those of you that may or may not be familiar with what a metropolitan planning organization is, it's a federally designated organization that's responsible for system of transportation, planning and programming steps over a geographic area that contains at least 50,000 people. So we have about 10 times that many folks spread across Durham City and County, a portion of Orange County, including the towns of Hillsborough, Chapel Hill, and Carboro, and then northeastern Chatham County. Our board is made up of elected officials from all of our member jurisdictions, as well as the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And we have a technical committee that's comprised of representatives of all of our member governments, as well as other institutions and stakeholders in the area that provide transportation services. A little bit about me, when I got here, Tricia asked me where I was from. And I said, well, you know, how do you mean? And I said, I remember seeing fireworks out here when this was a ball field, when I was younger than eight years old. And when I was eight, we moved to Durham. I remembered something that, from my memory, about Carboro that's even older beyond that. The reservoir at the community sports park, I remember being empty when they were building it and going there and walking around with my parents. So I've been a lot of places, but I am sort of from here. Ended up moving to Durham when I was eight, going to high school there. Undergrad at UNCG, grad school at Wayne State University in Detroit. Been a planner for a long time. In three different, well, four different states now. But I'm back here in Durham where I started my career in transportation planning as an intern in 1995. One of my, I have two college-age children, one of them says, you know, maybe I want to be a city planner. So I put this image in to say, you know, sometimes being a city planner isn't all that exciting. But even sign permits can be pretty exciting sometimes. So what do we do with the MPO? We have some really high-level overarching initiatives that we work on over a cycle that's typically about four years. One of them is a comprehensive transportation plan. This is a requirement in North Carolina state law that looks at all of our transportation needs across all of our different modes, be that non-motorized, bicycling pedestrians, transit highways, freight, shipping, all those things. Right now, we're working on CTP Amendment Number Five. It does include projects in the city of Carboro that's really drilling in on non-motorized and pedestrian project identification, because the way the state selects projects according to their complete streets policies focuses on elements that are non-motorized. So if you don't describe a project as having a non-motorized component, the state may not consider those in design elements when it moves forward to implement the project. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan is a federal requirement. So where the CTP, we put all of the projects in. The MTP is fiscally constrained. We can only put projects in the long-range federal transportation plan that we anticipate will have revenues to pay for. And I think that's pretty key. That's a big difference. Now, out of that long-range Metropolitan Transportation Plan, we have a 10-year program of projects. It's very similar to what you probably have here with the Capitol Improvements Program, the review. So when projects are getting close to being delivered, you get more into the details of them, figuring out how they're going to work, getting additional public involvement before they go forward. Right now, we are working on a series of TIP amendments, which honestly, a lot of them are from the state of North Carolina's issues with transportation funding a couple of years ago. And the fallout from that experience is what's sort of cascaded and dominoed into our projects today. We've got a couple of different big corridor studies we're working on. We actually have six or seven special studies this year. The two big corridor studies are Orange County US 70 Corridor and then US 70 in Durham County east of the new East End Connector. So between there and the Wake County line. In both cases, we are looking for ways to get a better transportation corridor in place without necessarily adding a lot of lanes and disrupting a lot of the natural environment. And increasing opportunities for public transportation and biking and walking. We have a group of employees that work on technical issues. We have a regional travel demand model that we share with our partner agency to the east, the Capitol Area Metropolitan Planning Area. We have a congestion management process that we have to undertake. That's another federal requirement, but we're going to look at congested corridors in the DCHC MPO area and focus on alternative transportation methods to try to alleviate some of the traffic. We've been working a lot on transit planning with Orange and Durham County. We, outside of our federal transportation planning responsibilities, have facilitated the Orange County and Durham County transit plans that guide the investment of the half-cent transit tax, sales tax collection. And we have some other grant recipients that, through a different federal program in Orange and Durham Counties. In Orange County, funding has gone to Orange County Senior Transportation and the Chapel Hill Transit Easy Rider Program. We've got some other really high-level initiatives we're working on. Probably the most exciting to me is understanding how the concept of big data can help us analyze how people and goods move. For example, we have a subscription to a service called Streetlight Data. It gives us processed traffic volumes about three months after they occur, which is a lot faster than going out and collecting traffic counts and trying to factor them in. And Streetlight Data comes from a lot of different places, including cellphone usage. So yes, when you click Terms of Service on an app, like Google or Apple Maps or anything else, and it's tracking you, they're selling that data. And it might not be individualized, but it helps us see how people in the Western Triangle are moving around. Probably the biggest part of what we're working on this year is that the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, since its inception, has been housed at Durham City Government. And this is the traditional approach that all of the large areas in North Carolina have taken. Typically, the MPOs for those 50,000 and greater population areas were housed in the largest city in their community. So Greensboro, Winston, Charlotte, Raleigh. All the MPOs were housed in those city offices. And what we've realized is, over the years, the agencies tended to begin to feel like they were representing that dominant city rather than being truly a regional entity. So in 2021 and the beginning of 2022, the MPO undertook a governance study. And one of the key findings of the governance study is that the MPO really needed to move forward with an independence and a regionalism that wasn't present in the current operations. We do collect funding from our member communities. Right now, it's around a dollar per person. You annually contribute, based on your population, to the MPO for our local match so that we can use the federal funds that are awarded or allocated to the area for transportation planning. We want to be really good stewards of your input and your funding. So it, right now, and we'll be voting tomorrow, as Mayor Siles mentioned, at the MPO meeting, to begin negotiations for a new LPA or Lead Planning Agency Agreement with the Triangle J Council of Governments. And we have a lot of really good reasons to look at that. Number one is, they are also a regional entity. So we have, we will be in an office with other professionals across all of the different fields that they also work in, including transportation, focusing on regional analysis and bringing the Western Triangle and the Greater Triangle together as one cohesive region. We're going to improve a lot in coordination. We're going to improve a lot in technology, because right now, we're going through the city of Durham to, for all of our technology needs. We'll be able to partner more with the Capitol Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and the Triangle J Council of Governments for technology. So just that alone, and ease of access to data, we're looking at a big improvement in our services to our members. And just like that, also, TJ COG is a member services-driven organization. We are too. So we definitely want to make sure we're responsive to needs. You know, we are ultimately representing our constituents here. And we have a great team of very passionate transportation professionals. Trying to get the word out about how much we want to help, so. That's really all I've got to present this evening. It's, like I said, a high-level overview. Thank you very much for having me. I look forward to seeing you again next January. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have a lower-level presentation?
You know, that's a great point. We will, and I'll make sure that your whole council is made aware. On February 15th, we'll have a sort of live MPO introduction training. But we'll, our platform we use for our meetings, we tape everything on YouTube, so we'll keep the video. And then that way, you can watch it at your own leisure.
Sounds great. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the presentation, Doug. Any questions for Doug today? Sammy?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation. On a later agenda item, we'll be identifying advocacy goals for the legal municipalities. And included in our agenda packet was the MPO's policy priorities. And I very much appreciate that information. It's very thorough and aligned kind of with Carboro's values. I guess maybe this is a question for the council. We typically, in the past, have done simultaneous, like municipal advocacy goals for the League of Municipalities, but also things that we want to request of our legislative delegation. And I just want to make sure that we have that opportunity. I don't know if it's necessarily at this, with this agenda item, but for example, those MPO policy priorities are a thing that I think would behoove us to bear with our legislative delegation and other.
One of the reasons I included it with that item, Sammy.
Thanks for including it, yeah.
Yeah, we're actually, in February, the MPO Board will take this work and some additional work from other conversations we've had about how to more strategically identify some priorities and have a list of legislative actions that we can suggest to our delegations. We can't directly engage in lobbying, but we can certainly identify some priorities. And I think we're getting really close to doing that.
Thanks. And maybe we should consider how to get into the process that the League of Municipalities has so that those recommendations are reflected next time around. I know they have a process, but as a town, we could be advocating for them through the League of Municipalities and, you know, not just meet with our.
I think you see those somewhat reflected in the League's priorities, although not as much detail or substance. But yeah, I think, I mean, certainly each of us as an elected official has an opportunity to participate in the League's process of developing legislative goals. So I would definitely encourage individual council members to get into those committees on the League, that the League puts together every couple of years and be an advocate for these priorities, because I totally agree with you, Sammy. It would be nice to see these reflected even more strongly in the League's priorities.
Yeah. And I don't know if our town clerk, are you involved with their process? Or is it just now that we will be delegating you to it? Do you participate in any of those meetings or anything?
Not with this town.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Just one, no, no. Thank you.
Sammy, Susan?
Doug, thank you for your presentation tonight. It was really terrific. I have a question. Sammy was referring to the, some of the materials later on in the agenda. And there was something that was mentioned that kind of piqued my curiosity, but it was that MPO was going to work with NC DOT staff to allocate maintenance funds for state streets that are transferred to municipal responsibility. So there has. So there has been, you know, some talk here about Carboro taking ownership of Main Street. And I'm just curious, does this mean that there possibly could be some funding for Carboro? Should we do this? Should Main Street be transferred to the ownership of Carboro? Does this mean that we could actually get some state funding that would help with the maintenance of Main Street?
I believe that, under the, I believe it's the Powell Act here in North Carolina, that funds are distributed based on population and lane miles. So when, if there is maintenance responsibility, if that ownership transfers to the town, that would impact the formula and increase your allotment. I don't know what kind of dollar amount that directly means.
Yeah, just to tie that to the, I think that it's a legislative goal that's been identified to.
No, I was, I was.
Yeah, it's the, I think the issue that has been found by a lot of municipalities is that while we do receive Powell Bill funds to help with maintenance, they aren't often enough to deal with the need.
In every state I've worked in, you're exactly right. The amount of funding is never enough to stay ahead of preventative maintenance, let alone actual, you know, improvements. I would say that, based on other conversations with the state, transportation funding and how it is collected is going to undertake a huge paradigm shift very, very quickly. As we're setting goals in place to, mostly at the state level, to transition to alternative fuel vehicle fleets. Excise taxes on traditional patrolling fuels are, they're rendered meaningless. And we don't have a good or standardized replacement across the country ready to step in to fill that void. But I saw, I sat in on a presentation today. We expect electric heavy vehicle trucks to hit the North Carolina fleet in 2028. It's not long. So definitely addressing transportation funding is key. And the state legislature is working on that. We definitely would like to see more language where, as revenue increases occur, that they're not kept only at the NCDOT level, but that our local partners have access to more funding too.
Thank you, Doug.
Any other questions for Doug? Appreciate seeing you here in Carboro. Welcome back.
I'll be back plenty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Trish, on to the next item, please.
Next item, number two. Consideration of Town Code Amendment Establishing a Loading Zone on South Greensboro Street. The purpose of this item is for the town council to consider an amendment to the town code establishing a loading zone in front of a portion of the northbound shoulder at 100 South Greensboro Street. And Tina Moon is here to make the presentation.
Tina, Happy New Year.
Hey, good evening. Thanks, everyone. Trish, thanks for the introduction. I think this is pretty straightforward, what this is about. As some of you may have noticed, with resurfacing projects, there's often a little overlap onto the side streets. That's done particularly when there's milling involved so that the finished level of pavement is, you know, is even, is level throughout. When that happens, as part of the pavement markings, pavement markings are replaced as needed on the side streets. And the situation here, when East Main Street was resurfaced, some of this overlap extended onto South Greensboro Street in front of Neil's Deli. Thank you for being here. And covered the existing loading zone, which was brought to our attention when the folks from Neil's Deli reached out and noticed that it was gone and it was becoming a problem. So we had a staff discussion. Public Works has been working to gather some estimates, as noted in the agenda. The second step to that was a quick search of the town code when we realized a housekeeping matter needed to be taken care of and that we needed to technically add this to the town code. And so that's really the purpose of this, of this agenda tonight. This was in your packet as well. This is kind of the before and after. And my apologies that the before is a little bit, a little faded in the image, but you can at least see here was the hatch loading zone. And it is, sure enough, it is no longer there. So the proposed town code amendment is described right here. It would be adding a new subsection five. And I've just zoomed in a little bit so you can, you can understand, seeing it as well as reading it, what it would be. It would be to add the same type of a new hatch loading zone. So we had a question of trying to look at the corridor, a little bit longer stretch of the corridor. This is, this is, thanks to Bing, I kind of like that 3D look because I think it's a little bit easier to read. Unfortunately, in this case, it is a little, it's a little bit high up to really do a detailed dive of looking at the street close up. This is the intersection and the location we've been talking about. It is useful to look at this section in particular because you may recall from some of our last transportation topic updates, some projects that are going on there already. North Greensboro Street running down to, I believe it's approximately Carr Street, is subject for resurfacing FY 2024. We're working with the town engineer now in a consulting firm to look at a kind of a capacity analysis to see if there's a way to get bike lanes throughout this corridor and to have more buffered type bike lanes moving farther up north of, the northern portion of Greensboro as it continues towards the, towards the west. So that work is underway. We've also looked at trying to do something in this little section, potentially with ARPA funds to help with this connection. So that, that work is underway right now, but we don't yet have the results of that. So jumping to the recommendations, we do have a draft amendment in your packet for the town code. And, and what we might suggest is we would kind of keep you up to date on further assessment of the corridor with the idea of potentially changing the cross-section work that we would continue to analyze either as part of the 203 project or again, as part of this work we're doing now prior to the resurfacing. So I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Tina. And Sammy, I'll call on you first because I think this was perhaps in part responding to some questions you had about.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your response, Tina. I think that's the main thing I'm interested in, is making sure that we are looking at the opportunity, given that there's space there, somehow making that more connectivity for biking. I, of course, also recognize the need for local businesses. And so I am supportive of this ordinance amendment, but presumably that could be amended later if we find there to be a need. So with that understanding, I'd like to move the ordinance.
Is there a second to the motion by Susan? Is there further discussion? Susan?
Yeah, I second. And also, just a couple of sort of practical questions. So one question is, I appreciate the comment about the cars that are coming and parking in the loading zone because they're having difficulty finding spaces. How is that being handled right now? Possibility of putting signs up or what, you know, is the, any thing to help with that?
I believe we did some updates to the webpage before the 203 got underway to help guide people. But we could certainly take another look at that in the field and see if some more directions are, would be helpful.
Can I just follow up, Susan? Are you specifically asking about people who today are parking in what is going to now be officially a loading zone? Is there, how is that currently being dealt with in that specific location? If, for example, if Sheila or the employees at Neil's Deli, are there, is there a sign there?
I don't believe that there is signage there now.
There's no sign. I just checked on my way here.
I mean, that's, that's.
There's no payment and there's nothing, no sign.
It's just kind of waiting for this restriping to happen.
Sure. So that's the question, is could a sign be put up just during this interim period before the new markings or?
I think we could look into that, sure.
That would be great. And then just for clarification, it sounds like the new markings can't be done until the weather's a little bit, temperatures are a little warmer. So are you anticipating springtime or?
Yeah, depending on whether it's thermoplastic or, you know, typically you do wait until the temperature gets a little bit warmer. I think we had a conversation today as to whether we could do something temporary in the interim. So we're looking into that too.
Okay, great. That's all for me.
Before I come back to you, Sammy, is there anyone else who had their hand up? I don't think so, but.
You answered it.
Sammy?
So, you know, we have other loading zones, like I'm thinking in front of Weaver Street Market. And, and that's a very time-specific loading zone. And in reading this ordinance, there is no time specificity. And I'm curious to understand what the actual need is and if there's a possibility of doing like we are doing in these other spaces of making it a loading zone for a specific timeframe and then opening it up for other uses thereafter.
I think that's something that we could, we could reach out to the, to the different businesses and see if that's something that would make sense. You know, I can, I, I can share what I have observed. And I have an image that shows a rather large delivery truck that's in that spot as well as I think while people are still doing kind of takeout, there are people who will often kind of park in there for just a few minutes and then pull back out. But we're, we can certainly reach out to those business owners and see if there's something else we can do.
With that intention, on behalf of staff, to find out whether that's an interest or need, does it make sense to approve of this tonight? Or is it, would it be easily to amend if we want to set some timeline there?
There's an opport, if you find that there's a, if it makes sense to place restrictions like you have on Weaver Street, we could do that at a later date as well.
We could, and we could do that with signage in the field, so.
I guess related to that is for the parking that's in front of the weave, is that written in our ordinance or is it solely by signage?
I'm thinking of the loading dock on the other side of Weaver Street. And, and that is, I believe, in the town code, yeah.
Right, okay, so it would be more than just the sign. It would be a change to our, this specific thing. Okay, thank you.
It's been moved by Sammy, seconded by Susan, that we approve the attachment, attachment A, which is the draft ordinance amending the town code. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Matter passes unanimously. Thanks for, thanks again, Matt. Appreciate your input. All right, next item.
Okay, item three. Consideration, oops. Consideration of North Carolina League of Municipalities Municipal Advocacy Goals and Other Legislative Priorities. The purpose of this agenda item is for the town council to review and consider the endorsement of the NCLM Municipal Advocacy Goals.
Thanks, Trish. So I'll just offer a little bit.
I do not think we have a presentation this evening.
Presentation.
It's an agenda item from the clerk and the mayor.
Just a little bit of more background. You have a few attachments in your agenda to kind of round out the information to consider here. And so really, the most immediate task that we need to accomplish tonight, because there's an impending deadline, is for us to choose up to 10 of the League's municipal advocacy goals so that we can then cast a ballot as a town on which of those are most important to us. And then I, we also included a resolution regarding Medicaid expansion as another potential priority for us to endorse. And then finally, Sammy mentioned that we've, in previous years, of course, have identified our legislative advocacy goals for the session and use that as a kind of a sounding board for conversation with our legislative delegation. So maybe at the end of this item, we could just have a brief conversation about whether council members are interested in, in having such a meeting this year as we have done in previous years, pre, pre beginning of the pandemic. And if so, what materials we'd like to include in that conversation. So given that, we have what I suggested to Wesley and just with, if this makes sense to y'all, is we have a list of the 16 League goals on kind of a ballot, kind of like we've done with our advisory boards, where council members could just indicate the 10, the up to 10 that they would like to endorse. And then we just have Wesley tally those up to see which 10 arrives, rise to the surface. Does that make that sense for everybody? Mayor? So if you'll just circle the 10 or up to 10 that you would like to endorse, and then we'll go from there. Danny?
Should we be considering, this is strictly procedural, nine, considering our resolution in favor of Medicaid expansion?
I think that's a separate.
Okay.
Separate matter, yeah. We can do 10. That's a separate additional matter. Other questions?
Well, I'm just curious why Medicaid expansion was not on the League's list. The League's list.
I didn't have a role in the development of the League's goals. And I don't know if any other council members participated in any of those goal development committees this year. So I can't answer that question. But it's something that a number of jurisdictions across the state, including Orange County, actually, for this few years now, Orange County has been endorsing Medicaid expansion by resolution. So we would not be alone among municipalities in doing so. I also wanted to share, you know, Randy and I had a good conversation today because she was going to be unable to be with us tonight. She shared with me the 10 goals that she wanted to endorse. And I told her that I would share those with y'all. So if I could just very quickly read to you that Randy selected the following. Number one, number three, number four, number five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 15, and 16. I predict there will be some overlap with other people's interests there. There certainly were with mine, so.
Oh, God.
Wesley a chance to tally those up and.
The dogs won.
Looks like we're waiting for, also for Sammy.
Oh, that's the other team.
So Wesley's going to take a few minutes to tally up our selections. While he's doing that, can we consider this other attachment as a resolution in support of Medicaid expansion?
Yes. Yes.
Or a motion?
Well, I had an amendment to it.
An amendment.
Oh, yes, I just had, whenever reviewing this, I love the resolution. I just wanted to add in the second whereas clause to include the leadership of the House and the Senate. I understand sending it specifically to our delegation, our, of course, our House, our representatives and Senator. But I'm looking at it as, these folks already know this is important to us. Let's make it clear also to all the leadership in both houses who, even though they have their own districts to represent, being in leadership, they represent the entire state.
Okay, so adding to the therefor's that we would also share the resolution with the leaders of the House and the Senate?
Yeah.
But just the leaders?
A good idea.
Yeah, the leadership's in both houses.
Yeah.
In addition to our own legislative delegation?
Yes.
Just a comment on that. Sometimes the, how to flag something for the Republicans not to like is to say Carboro likes it. I just put, put that out there as like something to consider strategically.
Well, I don't think they're going to be surprised.
And I think they already know we like it.
I mean, if they didn't know that this, yeah, this is one of them.
Don't call attention, us.
Elias R., with that amendment, would you like to move the resolution?
I would.
Is there a second by Danny? Been moved and seconded, moved by Elias R., seconded by Danny, that we approve the resolution in attachment E with the addition that we also share the resolution with the leadership of the House and the Senate. Any further discussion? I want to thank Meg Malloy, who, as I think most of you know, lives here in Carboro and is working with an advocacy organization behind this work. So appreciate her bringing this forward. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously.
Good question. Does leadership mean leaders of both parties or just the?
I think, did you mean the leader of, like, the Speaker and the President pro tempore?
Yeah, like the, like the leadership structure of the, of both.
I think it would be good to.
Let Wesley figure that out.
Yeah.
Include the Democrat leaders too, to, to get more traction there.
And then I just wanted to mention that, as Sammy noted earlier, when Mr. Polisinski was presenting to us about the MPO's work, that I wanted, I also just wanted to include for your information these policy priors. for your information, these policy priorities that the MPO adopted a couple of years ago. They were actually jointly adopted with the capital area MPO, which is the Wake County and surrounds the eastern half of the triangle. So those are jointly adopted policy priorities of both of the MPOs of the triangle. And I just thought that you all would be interested in seeing them because they, I think, really track well with our own priorities here for figuring out how transportation projects are funded in this state, so. It is. We specifically wanted to put some focus on those three that I included there, which are the ones that have their own kind of information sheets in, in terms of how we invest in transportation, how we invest in active forms of transportation, in other words, not just single occupancy vehicles, and then thinking about transportation demand management, which we've talked a lot about here as well. So those are just really there for your information as well as the most recent set of goals that we adopted as a council in 2021. I guess we should talk about, is there interest among council members in having a breakfast or some other meeting with our legislative delegation?
New group.
Let's do it.
It'll be a, it will be a brand new group.
Start from my.
So what we've done in the past, yeah, that's right. So what we've done in the past is the clerk has tried to figure out how to schedule something. And we've typically done it sort of early in the year. I mean, we're already kind of into January now, but just so Wesley knows, historically we've done it kind of early in the new legislative session so that our legislators have a chance to hear from us. But Wesley, if you wouldn't mind starting some work on getting something scheduled for us.
And I have, I can read off the 10.
Okay.
Susan, that was the consensus.
Or go ahead.
Let me just state the number.
Just list the numbers, yeah.
Number one, number three, number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 15 and 16. Make sure that is 10, make sure I can count.
That is 10, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so those are the 10 that rose to the top. I think there was probably a lot of overlap on, on council members with these, just having seen the list. So the, the resolution that's, the draft in attachment B does two things. It would list these as the 10 that we endorse and it would designate Wesley as the person who will cast this ballot for on our behalf. Like to move the resolution?
I can't. Oh, sorry, Susan.
So it's been moved by Danny and seconded by Elias R. that we adopt the resolution in attachment B with the priorities that you just listed, Wesley. And you know, Wesley, that the deadline is the 12th for getting that ballot.
I have it on my calendar in all caps.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. I'll talk with Wesley a little further about getting this legislative delegation breakfast, coffee, cocktails situation on the calendar. And we'll, I guess Wesley at some point will be in touch with each of us about finding some dates.
Brunch.
Typically, y'all, what we've done with these meetings is we've had a list of priorities and you saw the one that we attached with this agenda item, which was the list that we adopted in, in 2021. A couple of those items are kind of out of date. For example.
I'll look at it.
Yes. So. The next to last bullet on that list, which was full restoration of the SMAP funding for transit systems, we actually achieved that one. Yay, yay, yay for us. Through a lot of help through our former representative, Insco. So that one doesn't really need to be on that list anymore. I think the other, other ones are all, there has been some slight tweaks to the legislation around camera footage, but they're still not great. But I think the other ones are generally still applicable and I wonder if we just keep those on the list as well as these MPO priorities that, as Sammy mentioned, would be good for them to know about? And maybe we also make them aware of the league's, the one, the league ones that we've endorsed and that could be functioned as kind of our package of legislative priorities.
And the Medicaid expansion.
And Medicaid expansion, right, that's a good one. Does that sound reasonable to you?
Yeah, I mean, what, what's the, what's, who's gonna be at the, in the past, we've had definitely our state legislative delegation.
Yeah, so we've always invited the Orange County delegation for the general assembly, right? So our, the two House members and the Senator. And then we, I think we've invited our member of Congress, but they haven't generally been able to come. But we can invite them all.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we are inviting them all, I'm, I would be interested in, you know, David Price was very leader. He introduced a bill on super PACs and I would be interested in including that as something to continue as representing our district.
Let's see who we can actually get in the room and then.
Decide what else. So of the decision of what our requests are is, we'll have another opportunity to.
Yeah, let's try to get something on the calendar and then maybe we can tweak that list.
Should we have concrete requests? There are sort of things I'd like to sort of talk about that I, you know, I don't know, like I'm, I'm particularly interested in right-to-work laws, which are not immediately actionable, huge cliff, as we all know, but you know, it's something I'd love to sort of like communicate with about our delegation and just kind of talk about what can be done. I don't, if, if we are, if it's necessary to kind of get this stuff out, then I'm gonna throw that out.
Yeah, Danny, remind me about this offline because the council, two or three, maybe more years ago, adopted a resolution around specifically legislation on right-to-work and other labor-related issues that I could share with you, including minimum wage and paid leave and all these other kinds of work-related.
Yeah, and I, again, understanding none of that is super immediate term.
And just going off of that, I would also like to include something around renters' rights, knowing that North Carolina is horrible and basically that's not even a thing. But, so I'm, I'm curious, are, are we defining these tonight or are we just coming back? And this is kind of like the, the beginning of that conversation to, to then come up with.
Let's get something on the calendar and then we have a target to work with.
And I would suggest for the ones y'all expressed, what's sometimes helpful is to identify a bill that was active or is active for them to consider supporting as a model so that when we have this conversation of what specifically we're asking, it's, it can be specific. And if there isn't anything, then it's a request for them to be the leaders and create such a.
Another thing that we did in 2021, and I'll come right to you, Barbara, real quick, is I think even in 2019 is we, prior to that, we'd adopted this sort of long laundry list of, you know, you know, dozens of priorities, right? I think of at least 2021, but maybe the one time before that, Sammy, I don't remember if you recall. We decided to have a much more concise list, knowing that our legislators are in a very small minority, like they don't have a lot of power, but just being able to focus on, here are the ones that we really care about right now. So just be thinking about that as well as, you know, focusing on the things that we really want to hone in on. Barbara?
I had a question about something that Sammy said. What, what is this about super PACs?
David Price was.
Just to get some clarity.
Yeah, David Price, I believe it was in 2021, led and tried to pass a bill, speaking to super PACs and trying to minimize their influence.
Okay, so. I, I don't think I need to say anything.
Yeah, well, we'll have them all on the table to talk about. And.
Again, I don't think I need to say anything. I also don't think we need to go down that road, but you know.
I hear you. Okay. So we have adopted the league priorities, we've adopted the Medicaid expansion resolution. Is there any other? And Wesley's gonna start working on scheduling for a legislative delegation meeting. Any other topics on this matter? Okay. All right, any other matters by council members? Is there a motion to adjourn? I think we got through the agenda, didn't we, Trish?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Okay.
We would by Elias R., seconded by Barbara, that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Great, happy new year, y'all.
New year.